Three under order, a couple of things I'll go over quickly. We may, one of our council members is not able to be here present in person. So if he logs in, um, we have to do a couple of things. Number one, he has to be visible to be able to vote. You can't, uh, that's state, uh, resolu- part of the state resolution. So he has to be visible to vote. So, um, we can't do it if we have him on, have somebody on a phone. The other thing is all votes will have to be done by roll call. So I'll have to go around, ask each individual to vote by name. But if he does not come on, we'll continue on as a normal meeting by standard voting. Next, so anyhow, any questions on that? Okay, we'll move ahead. Excuse me, uh, first thing that, uh, we put on the agenda, uh, like I said, we want to, uh, acknowledge Sheila's, uh, replacement of Adam Lamer on the, uh, council. And Adam was my vice, so we need to vote on a new vice president. So. All right, we have a motion for Mike T D. We have a motion and second. Any other candidates? All right, all those in favor, any further discussion? Okay, we have one for Jeff as well. Do we have a second for Jeff? I'll second Jeff, so we'll bring it to a dual vote. All those in favor for Mike T D? Yeah. Hey, we got two for Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, I, yeah, the guy seconded, I guess I should. Well, let's, let's say he's not on. Yeah, he's not, he's not on.
Can't vote over the phone.
Yeah, he can't, he, well, I, I did, I, I called him and I texted them both. I'll try and call again. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. So, okay. Yes. All right, Mike T D will be vice president. I've, I've worked with Mike as a councilman and, uh, he's also stepped in when, uh, we needed him as a, uh, to handle the council meeting. He's done an excellent job, so I know we'll work together well. All right, moving. Pardon me? Okay. I guess yes, since we, we, she nominated and I seconded, so yes. CDC is up next.
All right, uh, after several months of data collection, input and review, wage comparison preparation, key findings, final report development, I am pleased, if that's quite the right word, to present the CDC's final wage study report developed by me and my assistant, Taylor Bailey. You have the complete report in your packet and I've got a slide deck that hits on some of the key points, seventeen pages instead of seventy, that I will walk you through. As you know, when we began this process, the only actual compensation data sets we had were from twenty twenty-one. That's not super fresh right now anymore, obviously. So what we did is through the seventy pages in the actual positions wages part of each chapter, took what the averages were for each position in each county, and we applied the eight point one five percent cumulative increases that Pulaski County has gotten since then to give you a sense of where things would be if everyone had given the same raises in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, which obviously is not going to be the case, but it gave us some comparative data. So then what we did is went to publish bit budgets for this year on Gateway and in a few cases were available directly to county salary ordinances. So that as we provided a comparison between Pulaski County's twenty twenty-three adopted wages and our regional neighbors adopted wages, we were actually looking at the real data and not the hypothetical, everybody gets the same raise. Did not go through that with the small counties that we did across the state, only with our neighbors, since in many cases those are the ones we're actually eating with. But once you dive into the actual seventy-page report, you'll see where in each section, and I'll bring it up tonight, based on previous year's average, you can see how in general the small counties averages compare to the regional average. So for instance, the regional average at Highway Department might be fourteen percent higher than the small county's average, that sort of thing. So that data's in there if, when it comes time to making budgets, deciding about raises, you say, we can't get all the way to the regional average at this point, you'll at least have a bottom end and a top end range that you can work with. So without further ado, there is the bottom line. We're looking at a little more than one point three million dollars plus potentially healthcare insurance for some new positions. You know, I could have gone through every department and said, well, you know, that role could be two roles, this and that. The only new positions this potentially contemplates are, uh, a couple where pretty much every other county has a full-time role and we don't, and at least one of those cases, it could, that full-time could eliminate two part-time positions. Uh, and then, as we discussed during the joint session, adding security personnel into the courthouse when the project is. There's a number, one point three million plus healthcare insurance if some of those positions are created or adjusted. From our Gateway reporting, that was our net revenue for last year. Now, as Laura can attest, that's a very complicated number. When you, when you look at every single fund on Gateway, there are very specifically tailored funds, there are pass-through funds, there are grant funds. So that eight-ten is just sort of a point of reference for what our finances looked like. It's not necessarily the case that all eight hundred and ten thousand would be in the funds out of which we can make payroll payments or benefits payments. Couple of things on this first aid. We make these changes and I think we all know we have to, especially where we have seen the competition, highway, public safety in particular, where it's easy to cross a county line and see a significant increase. You're going to end up having to make some adjustments to the matrix. Either, you know, I don't know if we want to contemplate replacing in the matrix system entirely, but you're going to end up, if you want to get as close to regional parity as possible, making some adjustments or giving certain individuals raises bigger or smaller than what this report suggests so that they fall into the existing. I don't know, it's probably going to be a case-by-case scenario when they reach that point, but if you give everyone the raise appropriate for their position in the matrix's terms of tenure, um, to get to their regional average, it's not going to be pretty. I am of the opinion that a first important step would be going through our existing positions, our job descriptions, and to the greatest extent possible, doing what the state does, what a lot of other counties do, and aligning them with the factory evaluation system of job classifications so that we make sure that when we're looking at where somebody should fall in an amended matrix, it's reflective of all the considerations that go into it. Over the, there are probably some positions now, there have been some in the past, that don't fit neatly into the very basic matrix system we have in, outside of Highway and Sheriff's Office, where we just lump them all and call them deputies and we have one first deputy and everyone else is at the same pay rate, doesn't take into consideration any sort of educational requirements, experience requirements, difficulty of the task at hand, and so that is something that sets us apart from a lot of counties that do take those factors into consideration when assigning positions, specific places in the matrix or whatever their equivalent is. That's not going to be an easy process. It would probably require bringing in somebody from HR, if not an HR manager, then at least bringing a consultant back and helping us to do that, um, more cleanly than the ongoing matrix headaches we've had over the last half decade or so, where a lot of people have tried their best, but we've had people who had full-time jobs on the council trying to take what was set up for the Sheriff's Department and manipulate it in a way that works for many different departments with many different expectations of different positions. Matrix probably needs some update as far as where the points of longevity pay increases come in. Some places it might be higher, some places it might be lower based on the general needs of that department, but to make sure that we are providing sufficient incentive to keep our employees, once we have them, and ideally avoid retraining new employees because of unavoidable turnover, re-outfitting a sheriff's deputy every time somebody leaves for another county, and in addition to whatever training and in-house procedures we need to do, we need to uniform them. As I alluded to a moment ago, in the few ca- there are a few cases where, um, potential part-time or full-time employees I've mentioned could eliminate part-time, and there are a couple of positions that with further investigation, the council might deem to be excessive and eliminatorial in the future. And I do, before I dive into this deeper, I do want to be clear with that idea where I bring some of those specific departments up. These data only reflect pay and numbers. They don't necessarily reflect all of the criteria that might influence how many department, how many positions a department that on the face looks quote-unquote overstapped might actually need. I think they raised questions, or they raised points where you should be asking more questions, not necessarily laying off people, but as there is attrition restructuring. But we won't know if that is actually the case or if those positions are justified until deeper probing is done as to why they exist. Uh, and then, you know, we have people at all points in the matrix. People retire, new people come in, new people increase in the matrix. But these numbers you're going to see in the averages, um, which are more relevant to the twenty-one through twenty-three data than the actual comparative data for this year's budget, account for a law, a, a broad range of tenures. This is a breakdown of that one point three million dollars. One hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get commissioners, council, IT and maintenance, the regional average. That does include the IT salary that is already in here in the budget. I included it for, uh, illustrative purposes because we haven't actually filled that position yet. About seventy-four thousand to bring up wages in the assessor's office, auditor's office, recorder's office and treasurer's office. And I will go back, the salary for the IT director is a significant part of that one fifty. I think minimum of sixty-five is what we found would be acceptable. I think there's eighty budgeted. Six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for prosecutor's office, sheriff, EMA, coroner, EMS and health. You can dive into chapter three of your full report and see the individual breakdowns. And that does include three new security guards that maybe as many as you approve eventually. You might not approve any, but that does include that number. As you can imagine, the sheriff's department is where the bulk of those wage increases stand. Courts, about ninety thousand, um, and I, for what it is worth, and I address this in the report, we are the only county out of the nineteen we looked at where the office administrator in probation is not full-time. Maybe it's not warranted, maybe they're making do when it is warranted, but that is one of the few positions I brought up specifically because we are literally the only county that doesn't have that. Public Works and Development, Highway Surveyor, Planning, My Office, Aviation, solid waste, kind of a weird catch-all category, about three hundred and two thousand, and of that, I think right about a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty is the Highway Department with the rest split out among all of those other departments. Aviation, our manager is well below the average for the region. We're also the only small county we looked at that has a full-time airport manager. Most of them don't have an airport anyway, that is a conversation we've had in the past, and we know there are all sorts of sticky issues that go along with it. He is well underpaid compared to all of our regional neighbors, some of which even have second people on their staffs, but he is the only full-time one in the eleven random counties, six, seven thousand to twenty thousand in the state that we. And then Ag, Natural Resource, Soil, Water and Conservation and Extension, forty-three thousand, and that is only because we are also the only county I found where we only have one full-time extension person. I think once upon a time they had a full-time deputy. Theoretically, and I think I get this in later in the, if the logistics of scheduling at certain times of the year could be worked out, making one of those extension secretaries full-time might be able to make that into a shared position with Soil and Water. We're just about the only county I found that has a part-time person in addition to their full-time person. That's just food for thought. But so that is how the one point three million dollars break down. Diving a little deeper. County council members, you really underpay yourselves. I don't think any of you are surprised by this. The average county council member was paid at about thirty-five percent of what commissioners receive. You're at about twenty-one percent. We were in twenty twenty-one, the only county that paid council members less than three thousand dollars a year, and only two others out of the nineteen paid under four thousand. I said before, sixty-five thousand dollars would be reasonable starting point for an IT director based on where our neighbors are, who have IT directors are paying them. A few counties have a full-time secretary slash assistant to the commissioners and council. You have a human resource director in-house and a couple have both of those positions. And here you can see, if you wanted to give raises that were closer to the re- small counties rather than regional average, you could reduce those final totals by those percentage points for each department. Any questions so far before we move on to the next slide? I'm at you fast with a lot of information, got this all in front of you, but any questions? All right, our courthouse offices minus the clerk and surveyor, which I will address separately. As I have told you before, we are pretty much the only county that pays these office holders more or less the same salary. In most cases, the office is at the top, the assessor five and a half percent, the auditor, recorder and treasurer, both about thirteen percent behind, surveyor about four percent behind and the clerk about six point five percent. All of our department heads were well beneath the regional average. Most of them were roughly eighty-seven, or roughly at eighty percent of the average. The auditor, along with, I think the surveyor, was only at eighty percent. And you could see that the small county's average is about fourteen percent below the regional average. Sheriff's Office, uh, trailed noticeably. You can see every one of them, every one of those positions trailed and from twenty twenty-one disparities have increased in some cases as we have seen neighboring counties try to be more competitive. Our paramedic pay is now fairly competitive with the region. Our EMT, EMT pay is still a bit below. And with the exception of our investigator, our prosecutor's office, everyone trailed both the small county and regional averages. That stuff, that obviously excludes, um, Kelly and AJ who are paid by the state at salaries set by this, all of the personnel in there on our payroll. Health Department's a little tough to give a crystal-clear comparison because different counties merge different roles. Our health department administrator is also our environmental specialist. Sometimes the public health nurse or one of the two nurses is the administrator, sometimes the registrar is. But in general, we trailed there, again, no surprise, and see all about ten percent the difference between the small counties and the regional averages. Food for thought, six of the counties that we looked at have already had or have since merged their EMA directorship into another position, either EMA EMS combined director or EMA nine-one-one dispatch director, and several other county nine-one-one agencies are their stand, own standalone departments and department heads and not under the sheriff. This is one of those cases where I said, this is just based on numbers and without looking at, for instance, criminal court filings, all the relevant data, I wouldn't draw too many conclusions yet. But we are more heavily staffed in the prosecutor's office than every other small county we looked at. We had six, we have six people, four was the most in any other county. We are one of only half of this, or closer to a third, small counties that have an investigator. Everyone has a victim advocate, but more than half of the counties, small and regional, we looked at, assigned that responsibility to an existing staff person instead of having somebody whose only job is victim assistance. This is pretty minor in the grand scheme of things. In most counties where they have more than one investigator in the sheriff's office, there is a sergeant detective or a chief detective and a detective who is typically paid less. We have two with the same title and other than tenure in the same place in the matrix. Like I said, pretty minimal compared to some of the other points in here, but that is another thing that we notice time and again. I don't know where the current legislation stands, but as you have heard from the health department previously, there is state legislation being considered that would substantially increase local health department funding from the state and would also expect with the expectations of increased staffing and increased public health awareness, increased immunization services. And there's a lot of good information from the other counties we've looked at for what might make sense for how to restructure that department if this happens, if this legislation comes down. And that is addressed in detail in chapter three of the report where I talk about the health department. Other than the security jailers, this does not contemplate any additional first responders, patrol officers, new employees and that. I have heard Sheriff Richwine in the past talk about what the state says we should have in terms of jailers versus what we have, maybe patrol as all, that's a, that is a matter for another study. That is not something that I am comfortable even diving into in this point, just want you to recognize. Cooperation. Again, unsurprisingly, most of our staff trailed the county, the regional wages. Only person in our courts, either courts, whose wages exceeded the regional was our part-time administrator in the circuit court. And I don't think it was that big of a gap. Wages relationships to small county averages varied pretty significantly. Some people close, some people far behind, some people ahead, there's just a wide range of pay levels in the court systems per state. Our clerk's pay slightly better than small counties, but as I've mentioned before, trailed the average in the region by the same rate as the assessor, recorder, treasurer. First deputies were ahead of the small average, trailed regional, and you can see again, eleven, thirteen percent, if you wanted to go closer to the, um, reg- small counties averages than the regional average. So you've got that framework again. Several small counties' courts do combine their administrator with either the bailiff or reporter role. That's a, that's just another one of those questions where just because everyone else is doing it doesn't mean that our court caseload would justify it, but it did strike me as being a fairly consistent theme. Five of the counties have a superior court as we have, but only have one first deputy clerk, whereas we have a first deputy for each one. In our current matrix system, the pay difference isn't especially substantial between first deputy and second deputy, so it's not very remain right now, but if we started looking at tweaks to how the positions are assigned in the matrix, that might become more relevant. As I noted before, we are one of only two counties with, and actually I misworded that. Every county has a full-time probation office administrator. One of the other ones was the only one that had a part-time, but it had a part-time and a full-time. I apologize for that. Out of the eighteen counties analyzed, and this is another one where numbers alone aren't going to tell us the story, but you might want to look into how we're funding these. Six counties have one or more problem, problem-solving courts as we have, and a seventh is underway. Crawford County, which is under development and using a multi-county, third-party nonprofit, and Pulaski County are the only two not using their probation departments to oversee those operations. May be a very good reason for that, why we do so. But that did, again, it was something that caught me as making us an anomaly. Likewise, we have four probation officers, including the statutorily required pre-trial officer. The average small county had fewer than three, average regional county had almost five and a half. Public Works and Development are catch-all, covering everything from Highway and Surveyor to My Office and Building and Zoning in Solid Waste. The bookkeeper is literally the only position out here at Highway that is not paid below both averages. The gaps, Gary is so far behind the averages, it's really not funny. Dave, the same case. Our other foreman trailed the regional average more than the small counties, but trailed both. Our mechanic, same case, trailed both, but the regional more so than small counties. Our superintendent was paid below both his averages for his position, but also for the general foreman position as well as mechanics and non-general foreman in regional neighboring counties. You know why they're here, this reaffirms it. I know there, there's a lot of work you guys have to do on this council, but that is just exactly how bad the picture is, Highway. Our Highway op, our laborers and, you know, bear in mind, this comparison doesn't include any overtime, it's based on their forty hours a week base wage. I'm sorry, in this case did include overtime, because this is looking at the past. The report will get into more details about current. They were almost four thousand dollars behind the regional average. They could go to a county around us, that much pay increase just for crossing the county line. Uh, our surveyor was paid below both averages. Like I said, trailed the regional average about the same rate as the auditor did at about seventy-nine, eighty percent rather than the eighty-seven percent of the other courthouse positions. Only one other small county had a full-time assistant surveyor working in the field. Ours, which is currently vacant, was paid measurably below the regional average, but measurably above the only other small county deputy. Few counties use part-time field deputies. Carlos's pay was moderately below the small county's average, substantially below the region. If Tina had been full-time in twenty twenty-one, her wages would have been well below both averages, or for the regional average, based on her position in the matrix. My office, my, based on the, mine was a little bit more complicated. A lot of my colleagues are not county employees, they're nonprofits. So pulling that data required some anonymous surveys that one of my colleagues has done, job openings that have come up recently, and only a few county positions. The range at the low end for these small counties is around seventy, seventy-one thousand. High end, just the ones I looked at, about seventy-five thousand, so a fairly minimal gap for me. My assistance position, however, pretty significantly below the regional average. Um, and then, as I said earlier, only one other small county out of the eleven we looked at had a public airport. Newton County has two, but they don't have any on-payroll managers. Kentland has a contracted manager, I think his contract is like eight thousand dollars. Most of our neighbors, however, they do pay a lot better than we do at the airport. Transfer Station, um, our wages all exceeded small county's average. CDL adjustments made since twenty-one, it brought the pay scale up even further compared to the presumed small county's average, but we're not cut off regionally. That said, um, fewer than half of the counties have a foreman between the director and our laborers, and some of them just don't have any full-time laborers besides the manager, supervisor, superintendent. And then you can see pretty broad range to go from the regional average down to the small county's. Finally, extension, uh, like I said, we're the, our part-time in extension, pretty close to the average, a little above, trailed the regional. Our Soil and Water District Coordinator, well below the regional average. Here's where I suggest maybe if we want to be more akin to other counties, if we can make the budgets work, one of our extension positions might make sense as a full-time with some of the time split at Soil and Water. And, um, Soil and Water, about fourteen percent from regional down to small counties, six percent from regional to small counties for extension. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. A lot of data there, like I said, you've got all of this and more in front of you. But I'll just go back to that main screen right there. There's a lot of catching up that we have to do. Good luck. Any questions?
Guys have question, any questions for the presentation that?
Anything, no, I already can answer tonight, once you've had time to digest, to look through the full report, you know where to find me. Now, the full report has all of the spreadsheets for every single position, every single county, explanatory notes, more findings than the few that we put up here. If you ever can't sleep, it should do the job.
I once again want to thank Mike for suggesting to have, uh, Taylor work with Nathan and, and do this presentation. I think they did a very good job, they put a lot of work, a lot of effort behind it, and I, I appreciate what they've done. Definitely, yeah.
That is why I made seventy-page copies for every one of you. You've got it in paper. You've got it in paper.
And we, I mean, we pretty much foreseen what the outcome of the report was going to be long before we did the work, but at least now we have the work behind us to be able to show that we're not, you know, we can show the public, we're not, uh, you know, we're not barking up the wrong tree. We have, we have an issue here that we need to resolve. Any further questions for Nathan? Thank you. All right, up next is, uh, Baker Tilly. We have Jason and Caitlin here, and they're going to give the opposite, or they're going to give another side of the story that we have to take into account and listen to well.
Hello? My name is Caitlin Cheek, I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly. I know if you can't hear me, okay? Jason is handing out copies of our illustrative cash flows for the county that we're going to walk through. We have incorporated, um, some of the, the increases that Nathan, um, had just kind of walked through, and he provided us the breakdown by the various funds where those positions are located. So we have included those illustrative personal services increases beginning in twenty-twenty-four. So if you go ahead and turn to page two, you'll see a summary of those illustrative changes um, by fund, by year, just on this first schedule. Um, just breaking it out for you, um, for each of the funds that he, um, just went through for you. And the following page, page three, is our summary of actual and projected ending cash balances by fund. So this is a summary of all the funds that we looked at for Palasca County for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, those are based on your actual, um, revenues and expenditures, and those are the actual ending cash balances by fund for those shown. Um, for twenty-twenty-three, we include the approved budget for each of those funds, um, otherwise, unless otherwise noted, so I'll get into that on the general fund. Um, and then we include growth in your property tax levy for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five um, based on, uh, between the five and six percent maximum, um, levy growth factor for those years. Um, and for twenty-twenty-three, we include your certified income taxes. Um, but for twenty-four and twenty-five, we assume the majority of the revenues stay level. Um, and for twenty-twenty-three, we assume the majority of the revenues are, are equal to twenty-twenty-two, just to be conservative. Again, we include the actual revenue increases that we know about, again, including the maximum levy, changes to local income taxes. But aside from that, to be conservative, the revenues are, are held constant for those forecasted years. And again, for expenditures, we assume that you spend the entire approved budget for twenty-twenty-three. The very last page of this report that I'll refer to as, as I walk through it, is, is a budget to actual for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, um, that you'll see for many of your budgeted funds, you've underspent them, um, for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. So we'll touch on that as, as we go through each of the funds. So we can go ahead and get started with the general fund, which is on page four. So each of these schedules are, are set up the same. The top section is going to show your operating receipts, um, beginning with property taxes and circuit breaker credits, if that fund receives those revenues, um, followed by some miscellaneous revenues that are linked to the property tax levy, which are your vehicle aircraft excise tax, uh, financial institution tax, and commercial vehicle excise tax. Then the next section will be local income taxes, again, if that fund receives those, and then your various charges for services and fees to follow. Then the next section for the general fund, starting on line twenty-seven, are your operating dispersments. So again, for twenty-one and twenty-two, those are your actual expenditures. For twenty-three, we're showing your approved budget. So for the general fund, we are actually showing, uh, ninety-seven percent of the approved budget, and that is based on the fact that for twenty-one and twenty-two, you spent ninety-three percent of your approved budget, so kind of middle ground, um, still conservative, but wanting to be, um, a little bit closer to what we've seen in, in the past few years. Um, so it's a, a little bit less than what was approved, um, but based on the trend historically for this fund. And then also for funds, uh, where it's occurred, we have encumbrances and additional appropriations included, you know, year-to-date on the additional appropriations here. And then on line thirty-three, we have the illustrative personal services changes. So for all the funds where we have increases projected based on Nathan's report, you'll see that line item again, starting in twenty-twenty-four, and then we increased it by three percent for the following year for those increases. And then we have some miscellaneous receipts and dispersments on the lower half of the page. And then if you jump down to line forty-nine, you'll see your increase or decrease to the cash balance in each fund. So for the general fund, you'll see for twenty-twenty-one, you added about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cash balance. And in twenty-twenty-two, we added about eight hundred and fifty thousand. Um, there was a, a, a large corrective receipt that was received in twenty-twenty-two, um, that we don't carry forward. Um, but, but we did add, uh, that to the balance to end the year with, uh, almost four point four million dollars in the general fund. Um, and then line fifty-four is our operating balance. So for twenty-twenty-two, you ended the year with about sixty percent um, operating balance, which means you can fund over half of your year's operations with just the money that you have in cash. So typically, uh, a really good goal is a fifty percent operating balance, so you're well above that. And for many of the counties we work with, we're trying to get to fifteen percent, so. Very healthy. Yeah. Okay. The cash balances? On page three? Yes, so, so for twenty-four and twenty-five, that's where we have included the illustrative personal services change. So if you see on line thirty-three, we're adding about eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four for these increases in salary. So that's, you know, in addition to what's budgeted for this, for the current year. Um, and then we also did include some inflationary growth for your supplies, others, and other services and charges as well for twenty-twenty-four as well. So that's correct. So for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, assuming that we went all the way to the increase that Nathan had outlined, we would estimate that we would see a decrease in the, in the cash on hand in twenty-twenty-four by about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, which would bring your cash balance to three point four million. So that's correct, you can only do that for a certain amount of time before we would be out of cash on hand. But in addition, on the revenue side, we held all the revenues constant to the same level as were received in twenty-twenty-two, aside from those few pieces, like the maximum levy growth and property taxes, um, and income taxes in twenty-twenty-three. Everything else was held constant. Well, if, so in twenty-twenty-five, we're estimating you would end the year with two point seven, and if we continue to decrease by about seven hundred thousand, you know, probably three years after that, you'd probably be in an operating balance that was concerning. Um, like I said, the goals that we typically, when we work on these plans, fifty percent is a great goal. Um, fifteen percent's kind of the minimum, which is about two months of your expenses. So that's, that would be the level that we would probably not recommend going below fifteen percent.
Yeah, I think as, uh, Caitlin mentioned, if you look at the line, uh, or two thousand twenty-three, you look at line forty-nine, it says you're if this comes to fruition where you spend ninety-three percent of your budget, you're going to be spending ninety-four thousand dollars more than what you're bringing in your general fund. That's pretty much a balanced budget, which is what you want to see. But right now, you pretty much have a balanced budget. So with the increases Caitlin mentioned, you're going to start, uh, each year eating into your current balance. But again, as Caitlin also mentioned, that's assuming that you don't have any increases in income tax for the next, you know, six years.
So that'll be a dedicated debt service levy, so that revenue will be a separate tax rate, and it will only support the debt service on those bonds. Does anyone have any other questions on the general fund? This one obviously has the most going on.
We tried to take a conservative approach, again, increasing the expenses, but not increasing the revenues except for your property taxes.
And also on the property taxes, well, as we'll see in later funds, we did, uh, reallocate some of the levy back to the Cume Bridge and Cume Building Fund. So that's accounted for in here as well, so. Okay. I'll go on to page five, which is your aviation fund. So in this fund, um, for twenty-twenty-two, you, uh, had basically a balanced budget and ended the year with about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, um, a hundred and forty-six percent operating balance, so very healthy. Um, you can see on line nineteen, that's that illustrative personal service changes based on Nathan's report, beginning in twenty-twenty-four. And again, for, for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, we're assuming that you spend your entire budget. And then in twenty-four, we're adding this additional personal services, uh, cost. And then on page twenty-two that I mentioned earlier, that's going to show you your budget to actual for every single fund, and that's another fund that typically underspends its budget. Um, it just depends on the year, I mean, if you have, um, you know, additional costs. So we left it as assuming you spend the whole budget because it, it tends to depend on the year for that fund. So assuming that you adopted those increases, the ending balance for twenty-twenty-five would be about sixty-five thousand dollars or a twenty-five percent operating balance. Page six is your economic development income tax fund. So for twenty-twenty-two, again, a pretty balanced budget, ended, uh, added about twelve thousand dollars to the cash balance in twenty-twenty-two, um, to end the year with about one point eight million dollars and a hundred and sixty-four percent operating balance. This fund, we did include that additional appropriation that was approved, uh, in twenty-twenty-three. So we are showing that you'll utilize a little bit of, of your cash balance this year if you spend the entire approved budget, um, to estimate, um, ending the year with one point seven million. Um, still almost a hundred percent operating balance available. And then you could see the illustrative personnel changes on line fourteen for this fund for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, where we projected you'd end twenty-twenty-five with about one point four million or an eighty-four percent operating balance. So similar to the general fund, uh, showing that you could support that increase for a number of years, this, in this decrease in the cash balance is a couple hundred thousand dollars, so you could support that for, uh, a period of time, but it is decreasing over time. Um, and then also similarly, this is a, an in, local income tax supported fund, so this assumes that your local income taxes don't go up at all, um, which we would assume would not be the case. Um, page seven, um, it's a quick one, that's just your lit special purpose, just showing that you do have uh, about twenty thousand dollars in that fund available to be spent. Page eight is your cumulative bridge fund. Can see in twenty-twenty-four, we brought the levy back up, um, to, in that fund to about two hundred thousand dollars. The ending balance in this fund, um, at the end of twenty-twenty-two is very healthy, uh, two point three million dollars, and, and based on the expenditures out of that fund, you know, fifteen, hundred percent of the, of the expenditures, um, are covered by the cash balance. So, uh, you know, we don't have any illustrative personnel coming out of this fund, um, but you can see that there is a very healthy balance, um, compared to the amount that has been budgeted to be spent. So potentially, we could, uh, maybe delay moving the levy back in twenty-twenty-four and leaving that levy in the general fund to help cover, uh, some of those increases that are occurring in the general fund. So until you have a, a, a large bridge project coming up and, you know, we can see that you're going to need to utilize this, you know, two million dollar cash balance, um, it's just, uh, an option, um, for more revenue available for those, uh, salary increases if needed. You could delay a few years, um, putting the levy back in this fund as well. Page nine is Cume Building. This fund, uh, we also moved the levy back for twenty-twenty-four, um, it's not a large amount, we moved forty-six thousand. Um, and then in twenty-twenty-five, we increased it up to about ninety thousand to cover that ninety-six, uh, thousand annual expenditure out of that fund. So just kind of covering what's needed in this illustration. Page ten is your cumulative capital development fund. This fund is, is a rate-driven fund, um, for twenty-twenty-three, that rate is point zero one five nine. Um, the maximum rate for this fund is point zero three three three. So, uh, if the, uh, the county, um, chose to, could re-establish that fund at a higher rate, um, it could produce some additional revenue as well. Um, there are no personnel service, um, increases in this fund, but we could move some expenditures from the general fund into this fund to free up some more, uh, funding available in the general fund as well. You can see currently, based on the, the current rate and the budget for twenty-twenty-three, um, we are projecting that you would be utilizing, um, some of the cash balance. Um, still projecting a healthy cash balance of about fifty percent in twenty-twenty-five without any changes to the rate or anything like that, but is an option. Um, page eleven is your cumulative jail fund. Again, not a lot of activity going on in this fund, but just, um, some funds that you have available. Um, this fund ended the year, ended twenty-twenty-two with about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Go on to the health fund on page twelve. This is another property tax, uh, fund, so we, uh, assumed that the proportion of the levy for this fund was at the same rate, um, moving forward as it was for twenty-twenty-three. Um, and assuming that you spend the entire budget in twenty-twenty-three, uh, would utilize about forty thousand dollars of your cash on hand, and, and twenty-twenty-three was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash and about a seventy percent operating balance. Um, on line eighteen, this fund does have illustrative, uh, personal changes included of about thirty-six thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four. Um, and you can see that, uh, we are projecting to utilize, uh, quite a bit of the cash on hand in this fund um, over the first few years of that increase and ending twenty-twenty-five with about twenty thousand dollars. The health fund, as I mentioned before, if you go to page twenty-two, um, has historically not spent the entirety of its budget. So again, that's just for your reference, you can kind of look at that fund by fund. Um, but this is assuming that you do spend the entire budget in this fund, so, um, and, and we may not utilize as much cash on hand as, as shown here. On page thirteen is local road and streets. Uh, we don't have any, uh, personnel services, um, increases included in this fund, and this fund is a pretty balanced budget and, uh, projected to be maintained. Page fourteen is, uh, lit public safety. In twenty-twenty-two, you added about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to your cash on hand in this fund and ended the year with a little bit over a million dollars and an over a hundred percent operating balance. hundred percent operating balance. There's a small amount of illustrative personal services increase on line sixteen in this fund. And you can see we're still projecting that you'd be adding to your cash balance each year in this fund. Again, assuming no increases in public safety income taxes, and also including that illustrative salary increase. So there are maybe some more funds. If there's other positions that could be maybe be paid out of here, that could be an option as well.
Yeah, I would, this is one fund, as Caitlin mentioned, as you can see, your ending balance is increasing quite a bit, you know, over a hundred thousand, almost two-hundred thousand dollars a year. So as Caitlin mentioned, even if you're not thinking about, you know, raises, this is, I think, one fund you could look at moving expenses from your general fund or your other funds to here as it's growing. Make sure they have to qualify related to public safety.
All right. The next two schedules go together. They're the MVH restricted and the motor vehicle highway fund. For twenty-twenty-two, the restricted fund added about six-hundred thousand dollars of cash to its cash balance. As we know, you have to send fifty percent of that distribution of highway funds to the restricted fund and can be only used for construction and reconstruction of roads. And the motor vehicle highway fund on page sixteen added about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to his cash on hand as well and ended twenty-twenty-two with about three-point-two million dollars or a hundred-and-eighty-six percent operating balance. Twenty-twenty-three and moving forward again is based on the budget that was approved for the year. I know it's showing that the restricted fund is going to utilize about five-hundred thousand of its cash on hand while the highway fund uses about ninety thousand of its cash on hand, still leaving about one-point-eight million in the restricted fund and a little bit over three million in the motor vehicle highway fund. You can see that there's the illustrative personal changes I showed in the, page sixteen, the motor vehicle highway fund. And assuming that you spend the entire budget, again, it kind of depends how it's allocated between the two funds, depending on the projects that qualify. But we're projecting that you'd be utilizing a little bit of your cash on hand, but still having a very healthy cash balance. Page seventeen is your rainy day fund. So just showing, that fund has about nine-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars in it. Page eighteen is your riverboat fund. This, the revenue in this fund could be used for any, you know, general purpose of the county. And this fund has about five-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars on hand at the end of twenty-twenty-two. Typically, it has a pretty small budget. There are no illustrative personal services increases included here, but just showing this cash that is available. It could be utilized to either maybe relieve pressure on the general fund to free up money for those increases in salary. Page nineteen is your statewide nine-one-one fund. This fund is, looks relatively balanced. In twenty-twenty-two, you added a little bit to your cash on hand, and we project that you'll do so, you know, for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-five as well, assuming even that if revenues stay flat. Page twenty is your reassessment fund. So that's another property tax fund, a part of your maximum levy. This fund utilized some of the cash on hand in twenty-twenty-two and ended the year with about eighty-eight thousand dollars or a seventy-five percent operating balance. For twenty-twenty-three, we're projecting that it'll be a balanced budget and continue to be basically balanced for twenty-four and twenty-five as well. Page twenty-one is your lit PSAP. This fund added about two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars to the cash in twenty-twenty-two. This is a relatively new fund. So currently, based on the budget for twenty-twenty-three, it's pretty balanced based on the revenue that we're expecting to receive. And projecting that once you add that line nine, the illustrative personnel services and charges, if there is not an increase in revenue, that you would need to utilize some of the cash on hand that was accumulated in twenty-one and twenty-two, and estimated that you would end twenty-twenty-five with about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or thirty-three percent operating balance. So. This could be a fund that maybe some of that surplus in the lit public safety fund could maybe help offset some of the personnel service increases in this fund. And then page twenty-two is that summary of budget to actual dispersment. You know, some of the funds maybe did not have an approved budget on gateway. So if you just look fund by fund, it just varies. But the ones that, that kind of stick out the most to pay attention to are those levy-driven funds. Like I mentioned, the general fund has been consistent over the last few years of underspending its budget. Aviation has varied. Lit economic development, that's a pretty common one to spend over its budget if a capital project comes up or something like that. That gets added throughout the year. You know, cumulative bridge has underspent its budget the last two years. Highway has underspent its budget the last two years. So you can kind of see that as you look through here. So. And again, the only fund in this report that we built in underspending the budget is the general fund. All the other funds assume that you spend the entirety of the budget. So if you, if you look at this page and you see that they historically have not, that's just for your reference. But the general fund in this illustration, you know, we've assumed that you spent ninety-seven percent of the budget, even though historically you've only spent ninety-three percent. So still conservative. So any questions? And I kind of went through a lot of numbers really quickly. Yeah. Yeah.
It can only be used for construction or maintenance of the building. So that was going to be the first fund we tapped into if we had proceeded with the board release. Once upon a time, part of the county's property tax levy included that cumulative jail fund. I think it was eliminated even before I came to the county. So two thousand and ten at the latest, and we haven't touched that, I don't think since.
Could it be used for justice, H D A C?
Maybe. If it's supporting the jail, yes. If it's supporting the rest of the building, I don't know. But if it's only supporting the jail, then that is a possibility.
I don't know. What's that? U. F.
Yeah, I believe it was about twenty-one. And I think Sheriff's going to get into that after taking those presentations down. I think the new group job unit meeting is about twenty-one.
So if, you know, when I go through here and look at this just to help identify, you know, we see a lot, a lot of them with parentheses around them. So for me, when, when I look at that, at, you know, the, like, line four, on page seventeen, line fourteen, where it says increase/decrease, you know, beginning cash balance and cash equivalents. That's not a good, that's not a good one to pick because it doesn't have any negatives. Let's go, we'll go to fifteen. And it says that on page fifteen, line fifteen and sixteen. So when we see the parentheses, that means that we, and then we look at the percentages down below, and we look at the numbers on line eighteen, line eighteen, that means if we left things the way they are, and we continued the trend that we're, that we're contrending, we would be eating into our cash balance. And at some point in time, some funds quicker than others would run out of money.
That's correct. And exactly what you said, assuming though that revenue doesn't change as well in any of those funds. But yes, that's showing that you would need to utilize your cash balance, assuming revenue stays the same and your budgets, you know, continue to trend in that way.
And these, these numbers even reflect, like, with property tax, with the property tax levy being thawed and everything, it's showing the, the, the bigger annual growth and what property taxes would be. And even at that rate, you know, bringing in, we'll call it more revenue because of, you know, any, figure out a way to shift some levies, some percentages to be able to shore up some other ones to, to shore up another one and all.
That's correct. It does include, let me see, noted here, a five-point-six percent increase for twenty-twenty-four in the property tax levy and a five-point-eight percent increase for twenty-twenty-five. And then, as I mentioned, they were, I allocated them based on the twenty-twenty-three budget order allocations, aside from moving levy back to the CUM bridge and CUM building fund. And I took that levy from the general fund when I moved it back. So.
And we, them, them two levies were adjusted to bring in about the same amount of income to the fund, not necessarily the same, same percentage that was there in the past.
For the CUM bridge fund, that's correct. And for the CUM building fund, I only moved just enough to cover that ninety-six thousand contract.
One thing we didn't do, but we could, again, we were trying to be conservative, is we could go back and look at your income tax for the last ten years and see how it's increased. And we could, and it's, you know, it's increased three percent per year on average for the last ten years. We could assume that going forward for the next couple of years, if you'd like to, just to see what that looked like as a scenario. Again, for this purpose, we wanted to try to be conservative and keep it flat.
Yes. Yes and no. We lowered our rate, but by shifting a substantial portion of the rate out of property tax replacement into operations, we actually increased our effective income tax revenue. So instead of thirty-five percent of it subsidizing property tax bills, we, I think, like, ten percent or so subsidizes property tax bills, and a lot more is actually going into the county's coffers as operating revenue.
But to your point, you're right. We would have to, to go back ten years, we would kind of have to make apples to apples with that change that the county did a couple of years ago.
I mean, I, I guess that would possibly help us know what the revenue might, might look, look like a little, you know, a little further down the road, knowing that information. If, you know, income taxes, revenue has increased over the last years, then we can assume it's going to increase. Take a Platte Sky County, the number of people has declined in population. So there's a good possibility we might see that trend even the other direction, which would be even more reason to know what that number is.
Well, and just being here in the past, having those conversations, that is one reason we kind of kept it flat, be conservative, just because you're right, you know, even historical, if it's increased, you know, we could see a decrease in the future. So again, hopefully it won't happen. That's why we kind of kept it flat. But we can run different scenarios if you'd like to see it to help your decision and even go out a couple more years, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think for myself, that would be helpful.
If that would not be a problem.
Yeah, if you can do that.
Are there any other assumptions that you'd like for us to make?
I don't believe so from, on my part right now. I think from our past conversations, the, you know, a couple of changes we made there, I think pretty much place things out for the future. Anybody else have anything? Right.
Yeah, hopefully this will be something that as you're looking at your budget this summer, you can kind of pull this out. And, you know, one thing is, you know, Nathan mentioned, legislation is occurring right now. So there's being, bills being proposed that could impact the amount collected. So that's something that you might want, once the legislation's done, you may want to revisit and see if it's going to have any major impact on, on your county, depending on what's approved. Like the circuit breaker losses. You know, there's been, there's a proposal right now that the circuit breaker cap, you know, we've talked about, you know, right now, homesteads are capped at one percent of gross assessed value. There's legislation being proposed that's going to be point-nine percent in two thousand and twenty-four. That would occur, that would increase your circuit breaker losses. Now fortunately, because your income taxes subsidize so much of your property taxes, you don't have very much circuit breaker losses. But if that bill does pass, it would increase the loss of the you're currently
And I think that's one thing that sometimes people, you know, this is a little off-key, but speaking about legislation, I think that's sometimes things that people don't realize, you know, that a state can make a change, and that affects at the county level. Unfortunately, the county's the one that's expected to provide, you know, all these other services. And, you know, it's like, well, you figure out how to pay for it. And, you know, when you decrease rates, if you take it from one to point-nine, that decreases the income that comes back to the county. But we're still expected to provide the same services at the same level and at the same, and our costs, costs don't decrease.
Yeah, yeah, those that, yeah, cities and towns that have tax rates over, well over two dollars or three dollars, you do have, I mean, there are some tax barriers in the county hitting the circuit breaker, but capped.
Any other questions for? All right. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'll have a flood of emails here in the next couple of days for you.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Sheriff. I apologize. A little late, but.
First of all, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Chuck for bringing up the issue, not the issue, the recognition of our dispatchers. They're the behind-the-scenes, a lot of times between life and death. They're just one phone call, one deputy call away from a life and death decision. I've watched them in there multiple times. They do a great job. Marie Roth is my nine-one-one coordinator. She also does mapping. You don't see the people, but when you call in the jail, you sure hear them. And I've listened to them in action, watched them in action. I'm in awe every time. A nine-one-one call, a medical call, they do a great job. It's been mentioned a couple of times, the HVAC replacement. What it is, I don't know if you guys have a copy of it, it's twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars is the total cost. As Chuck said, it's forty-seven to fifty weeks out. This cools our nine-one-one center. It's tens of thousands of dollars of, of equipment in there. We're on borrowed time on it. There's actually three units up there, but this one needs to be done first. We'd like to be able to put a down payment on it. You got to put fifty percent down, which is ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Nathan told me there's some leftover from the Justice Center project. It would be ten thousand, seven fifty, as I said. We could earmark to that. He said he can pay them directly. And then we'd have a year. I think it's within, I had the quote there, within thirty days after installation, we'd pay the difference. You know, we have several other funds we could use, because I think his fund would be depleted by them, because he talked about the DVRs and that sort of things. But I'd at least like the council to approve that. And then I have a couple more I'll talk about. And then I have a couple more I'll talk about, if you make a decision on that, since I'm up here, they may come and back up.
Yeah. Out of the money left from the uh Justice Center project. All right, we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Um, since I'm up here, there is a a $7,000 I'd like to transfer from the janitorial supplies to uniforms. What the majority of that is, it was our bulletproof vests that these officers wear. They were expired. Um, by statute, I have to replace those when those are expired. That was a huge uh hit to our uniform fund, so I'd like to transfer that to the uniforms and also um with the jailers, when they leave, I get them uniforms. I I've since changed that um to where maybe they're just wearing something else, but I've had to replace a lot of those, because I've had a lot of turnover in that department, so that that's part of it also. And then the bottom one that needs to be advertised, as I've said to you a few months ago, this is an additional, uh, it'd come from the misdemeanor fund, it's 2650. When I was here and asked for it in February, and I think it's just recently been paid, that was for the windows. The 2650 is additional windows that were identified, and it was brought to me, what have we done to see this don't happen again? Well, now, whenever the prisoners are released, we have a form that they fill out, the jailers do an inventory, they do a search, they do a um, an inspection of the cell, and any damages done to the cell, including the windows, they pay it. So this is an additional that needs to be advertised, but we'd like to take that from the misdemeanor fund, so I want to tell you that while I was here. Any questions, I'll entertain those questions for you. We will. We have two good judges. Yes. Uh, we just started it a month ago. There you go. Yeah, I'm not going to sit down in public. Anything else, any questions they have, as far as personnel, anybody wants to ask me while I'm here, I'm glad to answer them. What is? Yes, um, it's working right now. It's cobbled together, it's rusting out around the edges. I had pictures of it. Well, we hope so. That's the new unit that we figured we had to replace first. There's two other units, and I think Laurie was going to put that in his budget, but now the jail cumulative fund, as Mike said, I think I can probably get those out of there. Those are important, but they're not as as important as what I feel this one is. We lose that, and it's tens of thousands of dollars of radio equipment we're going to lose, and that's the nucleus, that's the brain of of the county, so. All right? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfers as presented here. The sheriff, 7,000 from janitorial supplies to uniforms, EMS, 860 from health services to pest control, 6,000 from EMS education to medical director, highway, 3,000, gas, oil, and lube to schools, seminars, and meetings, and Superior Court, 1,500 from office climate to cell phones. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. We have additionals that need to be advertised. Sheriff, 2650, building and maintenance repairs, opioid, 72,519, 83, from opioid restricted. Uh, opioid, 17,207, 89, from opioid unrestricted, and then USDA grant, 95,000 USDA grant for the ambulance. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. All right, approve and sign the 313, 2023 regular minute meeting minutes. Everybody should have got a copy of them from Laura and seen them. Uh, there's no changes or anything. I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All, yes. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes. Uh, we have the uh, we need the approval of the travel resolution that was presented. Everybody should have got a copy of the new travel resolution to uh increase the uh mileage, hotel, and food to follow the state standard. A federal standard, I'm sorry, yes, yes, federal standard. Be the man. Any further discussion? I'll entertain them. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes with one opposition. All right, good, board reports and public comment, anything from the board? It did, I I was unfortunate, I got notified of it, well, I think the same day I sent it out to you guys, and I wasn't in town, but I I'd like to get more information on it. Did they give you guys like any paperwork or any handouts or anything that could be copied or whatever, or was it? Okay, for sure. That's what I'd heard, something, yeah, like 3,000 feet down or whatever. Next council meeting is Monday, May 8th uh at 7:00 PM, and the next joint session is June 12th at 6:00 PM. Don't forget to sign any paperwork, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.